Called a work session to order and um. Does anyone have any announcements that we don't already know about like all the, we know about all the graduations, we know about the retiree recognition. Anyone else have announcements that we need to make? Welcome to the board education work session and um. I'm not sure about Mr. Kirkpatrick, I wasn't called by Steven, does he mind that? Okay, must have a conflict with work or a family matter, but anyway. We've had a couple of issues that need to be addressed on personnel, so we are going to, at this time, I'll entertain a, an actual motion to go into closed session. Second, Mr. Rogers, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries now, so we'll retire to our normal closed session area. We're back in the regular work session mode now. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Sharon Harrington.
They bring my car. Thanks Sharon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, and other guests, I want to start by saying thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come back for the second time, I really appreciate that. And I'm here tonight to ask for some help for the children of June Luska Elementary. It's not just about me, and it's not just about some of our staff, but it is for some of the children at our school. I just asked for some extra help and whatever decision you make, I know that your decision will be the best one and we'll, we'll go forward and we'll do the best we can. My request is, is for a part-time assistant principal, not full-time, maybe a day or two a week. And I've listed here some of the concerns that we have in the school. And as an educational instructional leader, I feel like that I'm spending so much time in management, I'm, I'm missing a lot of the instructional time. And so on the first one, right now, I'm charged with 83 observations, 30 PDP reviews at three times a year, which is 90 PDP reviews, and 30 summative evaluations. Teachers on staff require anywhere from four, three, or two observations per year depending on their teaching years of experience. And all teachers are required to have three PDPs and a summative. These observations for each teacher can take up to three hours with observation time, ride-up of the observation, and the post-conference. PDPs take anywhere from 45 minutes to 60 minutes for review, comment, and post-conferences. And summatives anywhere from 90 minutes, up to some of them could be, I've had before, two hours. That's close to about 400 hours or 40, 10, 40-hour weeks. This work is completed by me as lead teachers are not charged with doing this. And so, and I've mentioned that, you know, for folks that have the privilege, you can go online and see, and so my ride-ups are always done at home, that's either at night or on the weekends, I, I can't get even started at school. We have a lead teacher, Lisa Thompson, and she leads their IEP team or special needs review meetings. And because I'm either tied up with discipline or, or observations, or just whatever's coming up, she has held over 100 of these IEP meetings this year. And they can last anywhere from one hour to two hours, that's approximately 200 to 300 hours a year. I'm terribly disappointed in myself because I would say I've only been in about five to six IEP meetings this year. And that's not by choice, that's because we're, we're working 11-hour days and there's just not an opportunity to get in there to see that. She also is over the care team, that's the children who are not performing academically and we're looking at, are we teaching them the right methods, are we teaching them, what do we need to work on? And some of these children are later tested. She's had up to 52 students this year with an average of three meetings per student. And so that's about 78 hours a year. Now this next piece, I want you to understand, we have four buses, and two of the buses are two of the oldest in the county. And, and I understand why we have those, because we've got to put those miles on those before those can be turned into the state. And it makes sense that we have them, because we're right there at the bus garage, we're driving those buses right in town. But we don't have cameras on them because of the age. But I cannot tell you the discipline kinds of things that I deal with on those two buses, and most of them are after, after-school when they come back. I do pay for a monitor to ride one of the buses, and so I pay for that out of after-school care money, that's in a teacher assistant. I could ask teachers to ride, but I feel like they need to be in there after-school, meeting, planning lessons, meeting with lead teachers, meeting with myself. Often we have meetings after-school, PLC meetings, Ms. Thompson does her IEP team meetings, a lot of those after-school so that teachers are not having to be out of their classrooms. And so my front desk secretary, supposed to leave at four, and she's logged in a total of about 50 overtime hours this year. And we'll end up paying for those out of our after-school care, try to get her to take some time, trade time for that, but it's really hard, because at four o'clock, those buses aren't back yet, and we've got to have somebody up there in the front. I have, I have a lot of students with some real serious needs, and I, I just want you to hear that tonight, we've got some really good children, sweet children, but we have some really serious needs, have a lot of children with medication that's pretty serious, and if that is not in place, I'm handling that at some time during the day. In March, I attended the collaborative conference in Greensboro for three days, I feel like if you're going to do the job, you still have to be learning, but it was too much to be gone for three days. And leave that job up to the lead teacher, because she's meeting every day in those IEP team meetings too. So I paid for that out of principal staff development money for this. June Luska has ranked in the top three in Wood County Schools for the past several years with end-of-grade scores, we're in the top 3% as a Title I school. And I want you to know this, that the teachers that we receive, the staff that we receive from Central Elementary, some of the best staff I have ever worked with, been doing this almost 38 years, and I'm telling you, the hardest-working people I have seen. And so their scores weren't quite what our scores are, and it was not because those folks were not really, really good people, really good teachers, and working really hard. I, I just would like a little help so that we could have more time, that I could be more involved in curriculum, and a little less time just solid management, because I'm, I'm missing PLC meetings, I'm missing IEP team meetings, and you people are very, very, very strapped at school. Appreciate your time, and I appreciate you listening to me, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
What was the, what's the student enrollment over there again, 508, was that?
No, we're-
Four, I'm sorry.
434, 437.
And right now, you have no assistant principal, you just have a full-time lead teacher, correct?
Yes, yes.
The figures that you've got, 16, four per day.
Okay, now, Mr. Henson.
On the back page.
Oh, okay, okay. What I did, this-
Is that hiring a part-time somebody without benefits, or is that including benefits?
Including, what, what I did is, Angie just sent me this information, and this would be someone that was employed full-time, because you can see it's paying for longevity, hospitalization, retirement, those kinds of things. And so what I did is I just took that information, said, okay, well, one day-
Broke it in half.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was doing.
Less than half, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're looking at 32, 800, that's what we're estimating?
For two days.
For two days?
For two days.
Which could be less.
But for two days at this school, we're estimating 32, eight?
Worst case, yes.
Worst case.
Worst case, right.
Would it be feasible to find a retired person that could, would, could do it and would do it? I mean, is that, I mean. Do they be able to legally do that and not lose their retirement? Or, I mean, you know.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So was that number right? Two days?
Yes.
At least two days.
Dr. Bill, and that was 437?
Right up.
Now, one more question, let's see, two of the four buses, some of the oldest in the county. So you're paying out of your after-school, $1,200 per year for someone to ride boat, one of those buses?
One of those, I have one that's pretty long route, and it's, needs someone else on there to monitor, so I pay, what I did is ask teacher assistance, and I had one that came forward, so I have to pay her, her time and half, because she's already made her full-time TA. So her overtime is what I have to pay, and I pay for that out of it. But it, she doesn't ride every day, I actually have her three days a week. And then I have a PE teacher that comes on Mondays, Mondays I have two PE teachers, and so Zach Shepard, who is at North Canton, he rides for me on, on Mondays. He's not been able to much lately, he's had some things that he's had to do after-school, but, and I've even jumped on there and ridden a road last week, so.
Well, that's just, I guess, that's another topic to talk about, that's just concerning to me, that elementary schools, whilst you're having to put somebody on there to monitor what's going on.
For example.
Hey, they can be rough too.
Yeah. And I, I think why I even mention that is because-
Well, you're having to pay, yeah.
I'll give you an example, last week, we had an issue, and it was 5:30 before that issue was resolved, because we couldn't find the parents. We had to take somebody off the bus, and I don't do that very often, because I'll be there at 5:30, 6 o'clock, but we needed to, and we couldn't find them, so, yeah, there's-
And the oldest bus, when we say we don't have cameras, it's just, we just don't have cameras on those buses?
They had cameras and they-
I'm sorry, I was, I was looking, Joe, I'm sorry.
Get that off on Joe.
Sorry, Joe, I got you confused with somebody.
There were cameras, but they, they aren't working, and it just-
If, if those cameras were working, then would we have to have the monitor still? In some cases, you probably would, wouldn't you?
I would, because it's, you know, the, the camera's going to catch what happened.
Right.
But I've got to deal with that.
Still going to have to deal with that situation, so you're still going to have to need a monitor in a lot of situations.
Yeah, it's just, that's a lot of discipline right there, and a lot of hours logged on that.
Those are dedicated people though.
Well, yeah, I mean it's-
I mean the bus drivers, they-
Oh, I've got the best bus drivers you could ever have, yeah. And, and I'm not there, you know, I don't want to say anything, I'm glad we have those buses and we can put that time on there, because we're right there, and they come and it's, so, I'm not saying that, I'm just sharing with you that it's-
It's just another thing that you've got to do, that-
Yes.
Need personnel and everything.
You know, Ms. Harrington, with the years of experience that you've had with our school system, and appreciate that, but these types of things that are occurring nowadays is a lot of the regulations that the federal and state has put upon us and our teachers, and that's why we're requiring so much more personnel to handle these types of situations, is that kind of the gist? And how many, you know, in your years, you've not really ran into this in the past, have you?
No.
I mean, you've been able to, to run your schools efficiently and not had to have all this extra help because of mandatory regulations.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Sharon. Ms. Rogers?
This is why you have an assistant principal. I'm just kidding. And while Ms. Mann has passed a note out, thank you, Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Mr. Hines, Angie, and Joe, I feel like we always leave the rest of the crowd. We really do appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I know I spoke already, like Ms. Harrington, to our finance committee, asking for more, and they've already been very generous and helped us and our office staff by giving us a, a part-time person to help us inside the office, but, and there's a little bit of guilt, Ms. Harrington, and I've talked about this many times, because we feel like our county is so giving and so attentive to the needs of our schools, so we're very appreciative of the fact that you do take the time to listen and hear our needs. We realize that money is tight, we know that it's not growing on the trees, we learned that a long time ago, it's not flowing from a river anywhere, and, and it's really hard to find money in the budget sometimes. But we also realize that our children in Haywood County have, have always been a top priority, and we agree wholeheartedly with that, and we feel like they deserve the best. And in Haywood County, we, I've always heard, since I've been in this county, that there's a Haywood County way, and, and I like the Haywood County way. And I, I feel like if we, if we do it the Haywood County way, we're doing it the right way, and that's putting kids first, and trying to make decisions that are, are best for our kids. So, you know, Ms. Mann and I work hard, she works, I don't even want to talk about the hours we work, because it's in comparison to the hours you probably work, it's your job. We do more with less, and we work harder, because we know our kids and our staff deserve it. So, we're there early, we stay late, and I guess you could probably talk to the Waynesville Police Department, clock our times, we're there pretty late sometimes. They're checking on us, making sure we're not the ones robbing the building, but, and we want to do the best job possible. And I'm here tonight to ask you for a full-time AP, for assistant principal, to move Ms. Mann from a part-time to full-time. You have the sheets that Ms. Gardner's provided, that show you the salary, the difference in part-time, obviously there's more benefits with the full-time. I cover part of those now with my federal Title I money, because she serves part-time in the office and part-time in the classroom, serving students in math and reading. So as a full-time, having a full-time assistant principal would allow both of us to be more involved in the curriculum and instructional depths of our school, and helping teachers continue to do what's best for kids. You can look at the numbers that we've given you, you know, obviously, like Ms. Harrington, we have five buses, there's just, we're a little bigger than, than June Luska, is it really that we all have the same issues, there's just more at Hazelwood. We have 589 students as of today, that fluctuates and changes, and these numbers are the same numbers I gave the finance committee, so some of them have fluctuated a little bit by one or two. We still have five buses, we have seven bus drivers, and two of those are Ms. Mann and myself. Between all the AM loads and the PM loads, we, we have to cover some of those, because we can't find drivers right now. And that's something we're just, we're all struggling with, yes, Dr. Garrett passed me the other day, and I was stopped where I was supposed to be, not trying to take a right turn on the road. But we, we do that, because we care about kids, and it's not about the money, it's not about, you know, trying to do more, or whatever, goodness knows we have enough to do. But we know we, I don't want to be there at 6 o'clock at night with kids, waiting on parents to come get them, or running, you know, three loads of kids a day. I think our bus behavior referrals are very comparable to other schools, it's just more, because we have more kids, and the population that we serve, there, we do serve a high-risk population, we have over 240 IEPs with 126 EC students, that's, and then we have speech students on top of that, EC are the kids who are served directly for math and reading, and then we have speech students on top of that. With all those IEPs together, I didn't calculate the timeout, but if you calculate that quickly, one or two hours a meeting, and, and it, you know, the high school, I was used to high school meetings, 30, 45 minutes, because you're near the end of their education, but elementary, you're, you get out in an hour, you're thankful, and it is a good meeting, and we've made business roll fast. So one to two hours max for an IEP meeting, and sometimes it's one to three times a year for those kids, depending on where they are in the process. So that's a lot of time, Ms. Mann covers a lot of those meetings, and that takes a lot of her assistant principal time, if you dock that time. And then, Ms. Trader helps us with some of those, so that I can be free to help with buses, greeting parents, and meeting parents in the mornings and the afternoons. When we're not on buses, we, we just flex those times, so that all those things are covered. Behavior plans and meetings, as are, again, go with our highest-risk kids, we have the Safe Harbor program, that's kind of down there near the bottom, but our Safe Harbor program is very much like Bridges, it's located at North Canton, used to be at Central, it's a half-day treatment program that covers, you know, takes up a good percentage of our day, depending on the behavior of the kids that day. Those kids are cared for half a day in the classroom, and their behaviors are severe enough where they come out to receive day treatment for the other, the other half of the day. I spent half my day today with one of those students, and then I missed several meetings, actually, with central office this past week, because of those, those students and those behaviors. Because of testing going on, there's no other, you know, folks in the building besides me to take care of that. 504 meetings, same thing, you know, we have different students with different needs. Care team meetings, Ms. Trader, our lead teacher, helps us with some of those, because there's just not enough of us to go around between, but Ms. Trader has a job, Ms. Mann has a job, and I have a job, and we try to balance that as best we can. But again, with more time for Ms. Mann to actually be there in the office with us, we could spread some of that out, so we can be in the classrooms more, supporting our teachers instructionally, and helping improve the educational impact in our schools, I mean, in our school and our classrooms. We've listed student medications, we've listed discipline and suspensions, we've lunch accounts, all those are things that take part of our day. Phone calls we have to make, dealing with students and parents, you know, what we would like to have a five-minute phone call ends up being a 30-minute conference. And then we have after-school care, we have 100 in students enrolled in after-school care, on average, about 65 of those students come a day. You know, you sue it with about 40, you could trust everybody to kind of take care of it, and the after-school director handled it, but most of the time, there are some severe behavior kids who have ended up in that program, and one of us have to be there to deal with those kids in the evening, because obviously, there's got to be someone to make those administrative decisions. And then, of course, our enrollment, it says 586 on there, we're up to 589, if you count our pre-K kids. And then, of course, our enrollment for next year, we're going to lose 84 5th graders, but our enrollment right now, and those kids are not in the system, we just have given out the packets and received information back from 114. So we'll see how many actually show up, if, we have 112 kindergartners now, if that's the case for next year, then we'll definitely need that other teacher. So-
That'll be a good problem.
It is a good problem, and I'm not going to complain about that at all, I'm grateful to have them. Transfers and transient students, that is on there, just so you can see the impact. You know, we had students, we have students who are coming and going all the time, and that's, depends on the kids we serve, I mean, that's based on the kid, the community we serve, and the, the housing district that we have in there. If you look at those, in the last two weeks, we've had eight more kids come in, and that adds, and then we've had a few kids leave, so those numbers have changed just a little bit. Custody agreements, that's on there, just simply because somebody's got to be there in the office, supporting those custody caregiver agreements, depending on who's coming and who's going. SROs are usually at our, our school about three days out of the week, helping support us with either behaviors or custody and care of students. Certified observations, I was a little bit more lenient on the time, I did put on there that, you know, they can outlast anywhere from 30 minutes, hour and a half, to two hours, just for the average of the time, I considered an hour for each one of them. If you, out of 105 certified officer observations, they're each one detailed of, of what that looks like. If each observation and meeting were only one hour, the time spent would be seven and a half, 40-hour work weeks. So that's a good portion of our time, most of our time, actually, we're still struggling to get those finished this year. We're just hoping we don't run out of school days before we're done. Of course, there's non-certified observations, bus drivers, and all the things that go on top of that, there's just more. You know, it's the same school, with lots of teachers who work really, really hard, and people who are striving to do their best, but it's really, really hard with less. And you guys are awesome, and ladies, were awesome to take care of us, always with transition, Central Elementary School, you took care of making sure that all of our teachers were in place, making sure, you took care of the teachers and the students, you gave us everything you could possibly imagine we would need. And of course, as a school is settled, and we saw that we needed, had a, a small need in the office, you took care of that, and we appreciate it, and we just ask that you consider looking at this, this need that we have in the administration side, and give us a little bit more help, so that we can keep being effective at Hazelwood. Okay? Any questions?
May I have questions from Ms. Rogers?
I have one.
Yes ma'am.
Why is it you have more of the exceptional children than the other schools? Is it because the other schools are not set up to take them?
No ma'am, we're all set up to take whatever students enroll in our school, they're, you know-
That's one-
It's the district that they live in, yes ma'am. Yes, so we're going to have more.
Oh, okay.
I don't really have a question, just a statement, that I think it's a shame, pitiful, whichever way you want to use it, that you're having to drive a school bus.
It's okay, I honestly, I would be lying if I said I didn't like it, because there are days I really do, because when you see those kids get on that bus and you get to help start their day, it's a good thing.
Well, I can understand that, but I feel like, and I know it's due to having a shortage.
Sure.
And I don't know what the answer is, to get more-
We've advertised, and advertised, and advertised.
But we've asked, and advertised, and beat buses and everything else, but it's going to come down there.
Somebody's on campus. Amen, yes, I would be lying if I said no. It is hard at times though, whenever, I know that there's parents sitting at the school waiting on me, and I have to say, well, if you'll just come at 8 o'clock, or 8:15, and I'll be off that bus, I'll be glad to meet with you. I would love to be able to say, when you get out of your car to let your kids off, I'll, I'll be there. Because we started out the year, and we're both in car line, trying to keep teachers in classrooms, you know, greeting kids and being there for them, and now we're, we've had to kind of rearrange car line a little bit, and do more with less, and put less teachers out there, which is a little scary with safety, because we, we need to be on buses sometimes, and that's just part of the job.
The student lunch account, shouldn't, shouldn't that be dealt with, with cafeteria management staff, instead of anybody in your department?
And, yes, and no. That, that's a dual job, because they are kind enough to process those lunch accounts for us, they give us the paperwork, and Ms. Mann calls, and calls and calls, trying to interact with parents, and beg them to come in and pay their, their lunch accounts off. Allison works really hard to send out those phone blasts, to try to encourage parents to get those paid off, those general reminders, and, and at this point in the year, by mid-year, by Christmas, some of those accounts are pretty, pretty high. And in Haywood County, we have the belief system that we're not going to make peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for those kids, and I truly support that, because we're going to charge them the same for peanut butter and jellies, we do a hot meal, and I'd rather their bellies be full of good food and, and feed them well, so.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, I just, when you're talking about $1,000 in debt-
Yes.
-in student lunch, and then you or Ms. Mann's having a call, and you've got a cafeteria manager there.
She does help with printing off those papers, and making sure the teachers get them, and they go home with the students, and then we support that with trying to call the parents to make sure the paper got home, and general reminder before Mr. Smyther sends his letter. And Allison is great with working with Pat, we send her the names of the students, parents we've called over and over.
I mean, you hate to do that over lunch, yet, but I mean-
It adds up.
Yeah, it adds up, I mean, when you talk about $1,000, it's adding up.
And that also comes along with our transient students, because the students who come in that we see for, you know, nine weeks, and then they're gone, we can't find them, and those are, those are accounts that the schools have had to take on, and we do have to, we feel it's valuable, because that's less money- And we do have to, we feel it's valuable because that's less money that I have to take away from the rest of the kids. It doesn't come out of my...
I mean, it's responsibility of not, I mean, parents is what it is. I mean, I get a phone call from two schools and I get low.
I understand. Yes, sir.
I've got a question, this one on the logistics of, since Ms. Mann is doing Title I and if she goes to, to full-time AP again, does that give you a full-time Title I again or another Title I?
It gives me a part-time position. Yes, sir.
So, you would get...
Depending on what the budget looks like, you know, beginning of the year for the federal money.
You'd also be getting a full-time Title I as well as, how would that work?
Part-time. Her position is part-time.
Yeah, we, we've been asked to be real careful with the federal stuff because we're anticipating some reductions. We don't know how much that would be, but they've told us to plan for a reduction.
We'd just pull that part-time?
So, when we get our federal allocation, we'll know if she would have enough left to do a part-time or if it's not, then that's money she would spend on instructional materials for those children. But we don't have that federal allocation.
But then you would be...
We don't have the federal yet.
But then you'd be defeating the purpose if you give her a full-time principal then take away her half-time Title I.
They're two separate.
I know it's a different pot of money, but if you still take it...
What? Easy, easy.
That's, that's federal code.
Still have a full-time Title I, right? So, you have a one and a half, right?
That's what I'm saying, it's different.
Or is that, or you have one and a half?
Our allotment is based on our enrollment for our federal money and that all comes out, you know, after July 1. With our federal money, I've been able to put three full-time teachers in reading, one full-time in math, and a part-time in reading and part-time in math, and then her part-time, which serves mostly math and some reading.
Okay.
Okay, and if her position becomes a full-time principal, then I will be able to use that money for whatever, you know, our school improvement team decided was best for that money at that time. Could be another person. If we get more money, I may be able to make it full-time. If we get less money, then...
Still part-time.
We'll thank the Lord we got what we got and make the best of it.
Smile accordingly.
What do you, what do you project as the total cost?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
What's the total cost?
Difference between the two is $36,000.
Oh, yeah, $36,000.
Me, Angie.
$36,000.
$36,000.
In the...
What she's got there.
Yeah, but you still got to pay half-time.
No.
That's coming from federal.
No, sir.
Okay.
That comes out of the federal funding. Her, her position would no longer be funded by halftime reading and math, no longer be funded.
I mean, a halftime's not being messed with, a halftime Title I, you've still got to pay for it somehow and that's through the federal. But if a federal cut...
Ms. Gardner has a comment.
I'm willing to log our principal's half-time AP positions. The way they have made that half AP position work is to take their Title I funds and make it a whole person. So, if, if Ms. Mann became a full-time AP, that would free up her Title I dollars. She may not, she may use all of that to bring in tutors from January to May, depending on what she sees as her needs for next year. The way she and Ms. Shippman at Beth Elementary, the way they've, they've made that half AP work is to use her Title I money. And they're actually, another thing is, Ms. Mann is, even though she's the Title I teacher, she's not actually paid from her Title I funds. We pay somebody cheaper than Ms. Mann from Title I's and we put her in a position allotment.
Good job.
That makes sense.
And we've decided, Ms. Mann, Ms. Shippman and I, and Ms. Ayrton and I have even had this conversation, in order to have an effective person in your building, you want them there for the maximum time you can have them. We can flex times, we can change hours of instruction versus hours in the office, but to have someone at Hazelwood, if, if I don't get that position and it's only part-time, I would still want to, I would try to figure out a way to, to pay for that position in that same way because to have someone there just part-time, you know, three days a week or half a day for four, five days a week, to try to flex those duties would be almost unreasonable.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Chambers? You can do whatever you'd like.
Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, guests, we'd like to thank you for having us here this evening. Ms. Chambers and I are certainly humbled, especially after listening to the needs at Junealaska and Hazelwood. But we are here for our schools. We're here to request the reinstatement of our lead teachers to full-time positions at our schools. We've both kind of laid out a description of the lead teacher, kind of what happens in Haywood County, along with what is happening in our schools. But the impact at both of our schools on the lead teacher being part-time, and both of our lead teachers are part-time lead teachers, part-time Title I, has had a great impact on what we can do, certainly with our Title I funds, also in the role of the lead teacher. So, the layout here is really just kind of putting out what happens with the lead teacher. And certainly, we've talked about not being able to have meetings with teachers as much as we need to have, the coaching and the modeling and our lead teachers being in the classrooms at critical times during the Mettabrook. We do all of our reading in the morning and I'm sure that Riverbend does as well. Mr. Queen, Mr. Keeling, Ms. Keeling haven't seen any reading block of time this year other than if we've hired substitutes in so that they can see what's happening in those classrooms in order to be able to coach and model what may be needed. A few other things, I'm, I get very concerned about our meetings with teachers, our care team meetings in regards to students. Mr. Queen has not been able to be involved in most of those meetings because they're during the portion of the time where he is a Title I teacher in the morning and I'm sure for you as well. The other thing that is really concerning to me, really the coaching aspect of being an instructional coach of a lead teacher and being at a school with newer teachers, being able to provide them the support that they need each and every day. So, I don't know if that's how...
Yes, it is.
As far as Title I, it really kind of hits during testing and assessment times that we've got our younger students that may not be getting that Title I time because our lead teachers are over all of the testing. So, that's what they're taking care of during those times. So, it could be week, two weeks, three weeks that some of our children are not being served. And certainly, I know our needs at Mettabrook are great for our Title I and our plan has been to really hammer in for our K2 students and really take care of them each and every year so as they progress, they're not needed to be in Title I later on. I don't know how, as far as your Title I is concerned in the morning. But the greatest concern is, I feel for them not being able to do either job as well as they would both like to be doing their jobs. They spend a lot of time after school. Mr. Queen was killing, I know that he does not do, I don't give him any extra duty, there's nothing to do with buses, he sometimes helps with things after school and car line like that. But not to be able to add anything more to his plate has been crucial this year. No discipline, and I've said that to all of the teachers. And typically, a lead teacher may take on some of those positions as far as taking care of discipline, but if I'm not there in the building, I've told the teachers, you're going to have to handle it, especially if he's in the Title I aspect of his role.
And just to add to what Ms. Mancini has shared, I think Haywood County's strength has been this idea of a administrative team and a team approach to our schools, and that's included a lead teacher and administrator. And I truly believe it's that joint effort between the administration being curriculum-driven and instructional-driven that has helped us be successful. So, I guess my analogy is a team and the lead teacher is quintessential to the core team in Haywood County schools. So, regardless of the size of the audience, which we may be from smaller schools, this is like taking a key player out, it's like taking the catcher out half of the game or the pitcher out half of the game, and it's just almost impossible to do. So, we just stand here asking that you would reinstate this position and seriously consider it. And I am with Stephanie in that we know we're standing up here after hearing two schools that desperately need administrative support and we have to put our two cents' worth that, that we agree that that might be the decision that you have to make. We understand that. But to stand up for our own children, we were here. And I do want to say, just this last thought that I had, when Central Elementary was divided out, the children and the teachers were divided out, but they were led by an administrative team of a principal and of a lead teacher. And that's what you're hearing here from these principals is that they need that extra support. So, I guess I'm up here for all of us at the elementary level and if you'll just take our ideas into consideration, we'd be so thankful. So, I guess what we didn't put on here was that what a teaching position is approximately
Now, so...
Total of 60 or 60 times 2?
To reinstate.
To reinstate.
But now the, so right now, it's half lead teacher, half Title I. So, the Title I money would go back to do something else at most schools.
In my letter, I did add, yes, I did add, what that has done at Riverbend is we have the only school that does not have at least one full-time Title I teacher. All of my folks now, since, since the reduction enforced, are all part-time. And that is a model that Greg Parker started at Riverbend and that was to have grade-level tutors. Well, if I were to have just one teacher and Ms. Keeling, that would knock out four part-time people that have helped Riverbend be the high-flying school that it is. So, it's truly dismantled our Title I program as we know it. We have adjusted this year and it's been a struggle. Get test scores back soon and see how we're doing. I love Sheri, Ayrton, they've managed, last time we were here, you know, we may be gliding along like the duck on the water, but underneath everyone's pedaling really hard, you know.
So, it would go back to normal if you had a full-time lead teacher?
We're looking at a possible 8% reduction in Title I funds, I understand. We're hoping so.
We would hope to get back at least a part-time person.
Right.
And even though we're looking at a cut for both of us.
Would be about... Teachers are, we can pay some of our lead teachers in our position allotment and so our cheapest lead teacher right now would cost us about $63,000. And so, that's what we pushed that over into local.
Yes, sir.
To reinstate both of their positions.
Well, yeah, and I think you're, Ms. Angie, I think you're up next because I think that's probably what we don't ask you. I'll total, you might as well give us a total on all these positions.
Be right at $130,000.
I'm going to turn the page.
$131.
$131.
I know, I'm trying to find it. I'm trying to find it. Trying to find it. It's all right here.
So, you're saying $131 and see now, $131, that will be for the 2017, '18 year. And then if we keep it up and we have no extra money coming in, that's going to be $131 every year.
Without consideration any wage increase.
That is based on current salary schedule, sir.
Yeah, so if the state says a wage increase, then we want to, well, that'd be the state, but it has to, he'll maybe pull out of local as well to match it.
Well, I greatly appreciate what all you ladies do. I mean, I've been at Riverbend, my kid goes to Riverbend. I know it's a small school, but even at a small school, they're still just running back and forth and everything else and I mean...
It's orchestrated chaos.
Exactly. And I, I really do appreciate everything the units do, all the way down to teachers, custodians and everything else. And I will take this into consideration, it's just one of those situations where you've got $131,000 and right there's a woman that's going to tell us whether we can do it or not.
We have, we have complete faith that you will seriously consider our requests and that you'll make it in the best interest of our children. We don't doubt that. We thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Well, I'll just tell you how Joe's been doing. I have, I don't think we're going to have a bit of a problem. She's been, he's been saving money left and right, so we've got it.
We're going to pull it down. Wrong part of money. Wrong part of money.
Thank y'all very much.
You know, you think about it, all four of the principals that are here. Two have successfully led the merging of the school into their schools. And Ms. Mancini just changed one from a year-round school. She's dealt with transition and Ms. Chambers has had the target on her back for being a member of a school for so long now and continuing to maintain that. So, we appreciate all that you do. And like they said, we're going to take this extremely serious and we want to give you the best opportunity to, to give our students. It's ultimately a goal for our students.
Well, and I think we need to go back. Ms. Gardner, I mean, you're talking about $131,000. Obviously, we don't have to take it out of fund balance. Our fund balance is sitting at 2.5.
We'll anticipate the end of this year...
That we'll have a fund balance of about 2.5, which is where we ended last school year. If the board will recall, we appropriated just over $268,000 when we had the charter reduction. But looking at our local expenditures at the end of May, we only got one more month and we're at about 85%. We spent about 85% of our budget. Two big items that we are under budget in two areas are our largest budgeted areas. And we talked to finance committee last May, at our May meeting about this, our county supplement. As y'all are aware, we do those calculations for that budget in February, anticipating all those folks are going to get us, going to get a supplement about 13 months later. And so, this year, we spent about 93% of that budget. And typically, that run, we spend between anywhere, I've looked for the past six to seven years, we spend anywhere from 91% to as high as 97%. That don't sound like a lot, but 1% of that $2 million budget's $20,000. Same thing applies with Mr. Buchanan. You know, he has, and a lot of his, you know, areas, we don't want to reduce those lines because you don't know from year to year what's going to break. But right now, he is, he's, our OO3 budget is $7.3 million, which is a big portion of our local current expense. And he's right now at 77% either spent or encumbered. And he's probably got most of his orders encumbered. We've got one more payroll to, to make with our OO3, that's going to be another 5%. So, I'm anticipating our OO3 budget coming in at only being spent about 85%. But again, because that's 7.3 million, for every 1%, we don't spend that 73,000. That's why I'm anticipating that we will not spend the fund balance that we appropriated this year and so we'll be back to the 2.5. Does that make sense?
Perfect. It's crystal clear. Bring it in.
Is your area a anomaly or is that something we can count on? This is only my safety.
Yeah.
I'll say the trend here.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, is this... So, you've got, who's going to make this decision? I know we ain't making no decision tonight.
You ain't making a decision tonight.
But that means that Monday...
You'll have to go to finance.
Finance is, going through, back through finances.
Finance.
Finance.
Or we could send it back to Finance and make him bring it back in.
Sounds good to me.
Just do it on Personnel?
Just do it on Personnel, is that...
You don't want it to go back to Finance, you just bring us a motion, yes or no? Or you want to break it down into four?
I'd say bring it to separately, in Personnel, and then you can vote on it as a whole board.
I like your decision on that, that sounds good.
Should we really like to sort of count on about 135 with the projected increase for next year? Or is that safe to say? 140, okay. Roughly about 140.
Where these folks fall, there's the Senate, the House has not released their salaries, but the Senate, their projected salary scale, there's some lines in there, it's about a 12% increase. So again, it would be depending on who it is, where it falls.
Depending on who it is and where it falls.
Again, we'll, you know, we'll do all that we can to pay for lead teachers, Title I teachers, whoever we have to, out of our position allotments, and scoot as our cheapest people into this program.
Well, I guess one question, and I always think of this last, is you've got a superintendent here. What is your recommendation? What, how do you feel like, what their request, I know you're right to Finance, now we're talking big board. Dr. Ann, you're the superintendent, I would like to have some...
...with these ladies, because the system, and you know, times like when I was already teaching have changed so drastically, you look at every single thing that they are accountable for, I mean, not only this one, but you've got all these IEPs, you've got all these exceptional children, you've got Title I programs, I mean, you've got just so many people that you've got to supervise. So who's really in charge of creating them? But yet the principal is supposed to be the instructional leader. Well, you heard this, Ericson, her eyes, and she asked, when does she come to be the instructional leader? Same thing with Wendy. I mean, they need all these systems that they need, and I mean, I'm bringing them all forward.
I would, I would like to, as far as June Luska goes, I guess before we vote on it, is I'd like to know whether we're for sure, if we're going to try to go with a part-time retired person, or if we're going to use a half-time person.
I would say your best chances are getting a part-time person, that is either retired or he's moved into the system and wants to be an administrative member.
That's what, I mean, that would, that would save us some money, but I'd like to know before we vote on it, which route.
How do you know that?
How are we going, how are we going, or will we know, or is there any way to know, I guess is my question.
To my knowledge, there's no way of knowing.
What we're really doing is proving a position, because it changes next year, or next month.
Oh, yeah, the states could give us a bunch of money for administrating people. Just say here, here's all your money. Oh, I'm sorry.
Keep dreaming.
I think that what...
Santa Claus ain't kidding.
Could she hire a full-time person and use part of her Title I money? She couldn't, as, but I mean, like, sort of like what they're doing is pay, we're approving a half administration, or two days, and then the other three days pay out of Title I.
They have to do Title I work.
Right.
Can't be an administrator paid out of Title I, because like I said before, you have to do like a time sheet for federal, saying that you worked so many hours in Title I, and then your other hours are spent in administration, and they're actually, we're audited on that.
Okay.
It's, I think Jim asked the same question, but can she do that, I mean, can she have a half and half, half Title I, the half assistant?
Do you agree for her to have two and a half days instead of the two? I mean, her recommendation was one to two.
Yeah.
Her problem is her lead, they have so many, and with her lead teacher, it's covered up now.
I try not to talk too much about Personnel, but June Luska's sitting there at 4:37, so just be all naughty talking, not superintendent who makes Personnel recommendations, or the board who votes on them. If you're going to give the others halves, I'd give her a half, too.
That's what I was thinking, it'd be better off just to do two and a half.
It's a big school now.
You could fit it in better, like if you were going to...
Yeah, see, that's what I was thinking about, do that.
Go from 32... My two cents.
What's her projected next year, does she know yet?
I, I can pull it right back up. She's sitting there at 4:37 right now, and her projected is...
Yes, to come back, yes, to say...
Her projected...
Two days.
Yeah. Nobody's going to do that. Is...
Call them out to bed.
I guess while he's looking at that, the other question is, is a half-time, if she done a half-time Title I, does she have the Title I money to do that?
See, that budget's going to be cut, like we said, 8%. So I, I don't know if she would or not. I mean, or she could maybe absorb that, I'm not sure how she would do that.
So we may have to fall back to the two-day part-time.
For sure, 8% cut.
You said 50%.
Or is that still another one of those?
No, it's just projected.
That's just another one of those.
I am not...
Throw it against the wall and see where it's going to hit.
Yeah. I would, I would rather vote on a two and a half day than the two-day deal.
Well, in my, in my opinion, I mean, it might be easier to fit, but then again, if she's not going to have any Title I money to do the other two and a half days, it'd be easier to get it part-time. Well, two and a half, two and a half days still don't be, two and a half days still don't be part-time, you just don't have to find somebody that's not going to go over that.
You could still find a retired person that would, that would be willing to come in for two and a half, two and a half days. How did they figure it out?
Right. It's, it's about 10 less than right now, but birth rate's up a little bit. Our kindergarten this year is bigger than our first, or second, and our third grade, not a lot, but if that trend holds, it'll be about the same as it is this year.
And June Luska had low kindergarten last year.
Yeah, lowest they've had.
Well, I'm like Mr. Francis here. If you're going to, if it's going to be on the thing, I'd rather it be two and a half days instead of trying to do a two-day, because you'd be bet, yeah, I mean, two and a half days.
About eight or nine thousand dollars.
Nobody can flow across the system when they're planning and collaborating.
Right.
It's a difference of about eight or nine thousand dollars, I think.
A half?
Yeah. From 32,8, I figured up to 41,6.
But I would like to see the exact amount money by Monday.
Got it.
I don't want no approximately, maybe...
Know who we're going to hire, that will help me a lot.
Say what?
If you knew who the person was.
Know who we're hiring, that's going to help me tremendously.
That's going to make a difference.
Well, yeah, that's going to make a difference.
You can do that.
About 20 hour, we're looking at 20.
I know our administration, we don't hire the cheapest.
It's not going to be over.
Did you, did you see all that? It was like, why were you...
That's what you're getting right now, Mr. Kirkpatrick. A lot of performance for pretty cheap. It's going to be that 140 at the top, and then if the pay raises don't come from the state, or if you get to hire someone who's already retired, it's going to be lower.
Yeah, I think you need to...
But you don't know until you see which Billy Bob or Susie Q is sitting in the position.
Let me just say, give me the highest number that you think it's going to cost.
145.
That's fine, but give me the highest number.
$100,000.
I'm going.
He said, give me the highest number.
$100,000, hire three more.
I would think we could do it for around $40,000, whether it's a retiree, whether it's a mid-range.
Talking about for that one position.
I'm talking about everybody.
He's talking about the whole ball of wax.
You're talking about everybody.
So we're looking at 140, everybody.
No. Yeah, 140 for everybody that they presented, based on the current salary schedule.
Right.
And retirement rates.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's all we can ask as best guest.
The best I can do, I'm sorry.
That's what a budget is.
That's right, it fluctuates. Alright, did you have any more to go over?
I have a presentation.
That's what we'd like to see.
Really?
Thank you.
I thought you was just talking about this.
Oh, no, I'm just getting started.
Look at the time is. Well, I know Joe, we don't have to worry about Joe.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, we, we visited this issue briefly last fall, and I just want to say on, on the onset, I know that sometimes it's an uncomfortable and sensitive conversation to talk about central office administrator salaries. This is an important issue, it impacts our recruitment for central office administrators, and so I thank you upfront for listening to me and allowing me to bring this data to you. Let's get started. Went into the 2009-2010 school year, there was legislation that passed that said, basically, a teacher going into an AP position, or into a principal position could not make less than what they would be paid in the classroom. Their monthly pay had to be maintained as though they were in the classroom. We did, this did not impact us until going into the 2011-2012 school year, and we had one principal, that was a new principal, came on board, and, and this particular person had their national board. And so back in 2011-2018, the difference between what they were going to make as a principal for, and the teacher salary was about $48 a month. So we had to pay them on the teacher salary, $48 a month. And I know many of you have heard us talk about how many principals and assistant principals we currently have that are paid on the higher teacher scale now. And the reason that we have so many now is two years ago, the language, the hired on or after July 1st, 2009, went away. That language was taken out of the law, and at that point, any assistant principal or principal could not be paid less per month as principal or assistant principal than what they would make in a classroom. So fortunately for us and all other 114 LEAs in the state, the licensure section has this neat little calculator, you put somebody's social security in, you put in a teaching budget code, and it'll tell you what they're going to make, and then you put in an AP budget code, or a principal budget code, and it'll tell you what you're going to make, and there it is. No, no science or complicated calculations on our part, it's done for us. So as a result, in Haywood County, out of our 15 principals, ten are currently paid on the higher teacher scale. Out of 11 of our assistant principals, nine are currently paid on the higher teacher scale. So you ask, how did that happen? How, you know, what is going on? So, here's what happened. From 2013-14 until this fiscal year, the monthly master teacher pay, and if you'll remember, master teacher pay or national board is all driven by that A certificate, that A teaching scale. If you've got a master's, it's going to be 10%. If you're in, an M5 is going to be 10% more than an A5. A master's national board, five, is going to be 10% more than the A5, and 12% for the master, for the national board. So everything is driven by that A scale. And so during this timeframe, the master teacher pay has increased on average by about $442 per month. During the same timeframe, the monthly assistant principal pay has increased on average 111 per month, and the average, and I just picked a principal for, we have in our system principal twos, principal sevens, and I was just lazy and picked one in the middle. But the principal for has increased on average of $104 per month. And so you can see just from that, that's why we have so many folks, and it's, there's a break right there at about that 22 years, if they're on their 21st, 22nd year in their career and under, is where that kind of breaks, and the master teacher pay scale is higher. So in Haywood County, the way we have filled our positions, our succession plan has basically come from principals and assistant principals. When we have central office administrator curriculum positions available, that's, that's what our replacement charting and our succession plan has been based on. And what will happen, and this is a real, this was a real cost estimate from a few years ago. Dr. Garrett will talk to candidates, and I don't know where she is in that process, you would have to ask her if she's, has interviewed them, or if it's before the, I don't know, but she'll call and say, Angie, do a cost estimate on someone of what they're making currently as a principal, and what they would make as an admin for. And you, you can see this person, with the salary and the small, slight increase in longevity and county supplement, because longevity and county supplement hits against that base pay, they were going to make $4,200 more per year, and that's what they made. So, a little bit of history of how central office administrators are paid...
That's what they made when?
When they were hired, when they went from the principal position to the central office administrator position. So administrators, one through seven categories, and our central office administrators are admin fours, you have to be a licensed educator with a license in administration, or you can be a finance officer. So if you've, if you've...
Just a quirk in the law.
Just a little quirk. This whole teacher pay doesn't impact me at all, because I can't be paid on a teacher scale. So if they've got that licensure, then they're, they've been, they've got their classroom, they can teach in a classroom, and they can be paid on a teacher scale. So this is what our current admin four scale looks like for our central office administrators. We have a minimum and a maximum scale. And as you can see, zero through eight is just like what we've talked about several times with our non-certified scales. It keeps sliding down, and going into this next binding, it appears as though central office administrators are once again coupled to non-certified folks, and they're going to, the Senate bill is one and a half percent or 750, whichever is greater. So what will happen with this scale, that maximum amount will drop to step 43. It'll just slide all the way down, because everybody will get one and a half percent. And you can look, in 2013-14, an admin four at central office made $5,074. And again, you can see this on any of our non-certified schedules where they've, they've just been given, everybody gets the same amount. Does that make sense? Everybody gets a flat dollar amount. So, and this is just a quick comparison of the master teacher scale and our school administrator four scale. As you can see, it's that, it's that break at that 21 years of service. These are our principals. So we looked at our principals and assistant principals and where they are right now, what they're making in their current position, and what they would make if we brought them to central office on that admin scale on the same step as their principal license.
Example, if they were slated as a secondary supervisor?
Right, that's right. Then you can see, you know, it's those more experienced folks are the only ones that, that would benefit from that move, from that move. All of our younger staff, you know, they're, they're going to make less per month coming to central office. And again, our staff keeps getting younger. I'm sitting here with 31 years, and I realize how much younger they're getting.
Can I say one other thing? And some of those experienced people that could come and maybe like, make a little money, may never have worked beyond sixth grade. They may not know about secondary, graduation rates, dropout rates, high school credits, college credits. Just thought I'd throw that in.
It was surprising when we did the analysis for the assistant principals, because you would think assistant principals would be so much less paid that they can come and be supervisors. That's not the case. I think out of the ones that we had, there were just a very few that would make like $200 or $300 for that year.
This might be a down question. What can Thomas say?
Dr. Garrett, we have that pay, pay scale right there, and she will, usually it's based on what, how many years of experience they have on their license. She used this approach, and Mr. Upton used this approach, but there's a couple that might be paid less than what their years of experience are, maybe based on responsibility level. I can speak for myself, Dr. Rogers, I have 31 years, and I'm on a 28, and Dr. Garrett made that decision because I don't have a master's degree, and so she tried to offset...
So there's some flexibility?
There is, there's, it's just a...
If you could bring somebody and change the schedule.
Dr. Rogers, when that happens, I always, I always come up with a point.
Yes, that's right, and she approves it.
I think two principals come to the county office, and I've asked that they just be held hard for us.
Yeah, they, you're correct, Dr. Rogers, there's really all, all she has to, it falls with that, in that minimum-maximum.
So the flexibility's in the second.
Yes, it is. And like I said, we've not faced the issue that we're facing right now the previous years that we've had openings. This is, I guess this is the first opening that we've had that we're, huh?
That's because the state has raised...
Because the teacher pay has, has taken off, and they're allowing principals and APs to be paid on the higher of the two scales. And so it tells you, when we've got... And so it tells you when we've got 10 out of 15 and nine out of 11, what that master teacher pay scale looks like in comparison to the principal scale. But House and Senate, both, I think, are working on trying to fix those pay scales. And for this coming year, that's going to, you know.
Let's hope they do.
Completely change how that works. But this is where we are now.
So that slide, this slide right here that you're showing, you're saying, one, two, three, four, five, you've got five principals right now that are making less than the administrative scale monthly base.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
The yellow ones or?
But the yellow means they're paid on the teacher scale.
Teacher scale.
That's, that means that they're currently being paid on the teacher scale. To the far right, any of those red parentheses means if they came to central office and stayed on that step, that's how much less per month they would make.
They would lose that.
Mm-hmm.
But you have Tina.
Except bringing them in from.
Increasing steps.
Principal step 18 to administrator step 18.
Fix. Yeah.
Whether it is to make it.
I think she's going to address the real problems here.
Right.
She's fixing to get to the, yeah, you can fix this.
Yeah.
The real problem's coming.
But Mr. Superintendent, to answer your question, you've got 10 out of the 15 principals who are paid on teacher scales because it's higher.
And not stealing any of Angie's thunder, but if you fix them one at a time, then you have some real inequities or inconsistencies across the office and across the district of people who may have started to work together 20 years ago and they're in similar jobs, but they're paid like this. So anyway.
This is, central office folks have a license. I'm not on here. And you can see if they're, what their current salary is, is under that standard-based pay line gross in comparison to what teacher salary schedule would be if they were, if they had remained in the school as a principal or an AP, what they would be paid currently. And you can see the monthly difference. So we've got six central office administrators, administrators making less per month than what they would make if they had stayed. If you remember, on the bottom, the earlier slide showed an individual that came from a principal position to an admin four central office position a couple of years ago, and they were making 4,200. That same, to the right, that same person, if they had remained as the principal at their school, you see what they would be making versus what they're making now. They're making $2,500 less now as a central office administrator than if they had stayed at their school and the new language had been applied to them. Makes sense? I want to make sure I'm, because sometimes my words don't come out. I want to make sure that's very clear. So not only have they, they don't have the 4,200 gain, they've lost 2,500. So.
Pardon me.
They don't, they not only, they don't just, they've not just lost that $4,200 gain where they came from principal to administrator. They've lost that, plus they're in the red, 2,500. See, that, if you look, let me. If you look at the principal-principal, that's the same person, same school. That was about three years ago. That's what that, the same person would make at that same school today. 55 versus 63.
So you're saying that three years ago, the principal went in 55. If he went to, or her, the men, at the administration level, they would win in at 59. But then over three years, if a principal would have stayed at that school, he would have, he or her would have been making 63. But in the administrative, they're only making 60. So that's, that's.
If you look at these two numbers and compare that, you see that big jump.
Right.
From principal to principal. And then look at what they were hired in at and what they're making now. You can see.
The administrator.
They didn't get a raise over those three years?
Huh?
No, administrator.
No, the administrator.
Yeah, they got a raise. They got, they've gotten $1,400 as administrator. But if they could stay as a principal, they would have gone from maybe then to.
Right.
Current teacher scale of 63.
What they were, what they were getting during that time period was the one or two percent occasionally that the state would give all state employees.
Yes.
But they weren't getting the bumps that they would have gotten as a principal because they're not tied to the teacher bumps that the teachers were getting. And so it, it kind of leads to the final problem here that, that Dr. Garrett's talking about. Is if you've got these people at central office that you brought in before and you said, now you're not going to make a whole lot more money, but I promise you, you won't ever make any less. And that, then they are, you know. And if you bring somebody in now and use Dr. Rogers' theory, you know, where you can use the flexibility to hold them harmless, that's not really fair to these people that are sitting there, you know.
So they're being held harmless because they already took the.
Because they already took the promotion. And so not only will you have a hard time recruiting into the central office your best people, you don't want to hire someone necessarily just because they're, they can get a hundred dollar pay raise, you know, and they fit the pay scale. You want to hire the best one. But you're also going to have principals, I mean, central office people leaving to go either to other counties or go back into schools simply because of the pay difference. Over a 10-year period, that's a big deal on your retirement, you know. And so you, you got to have that stability in central office of the leadership. You don't want them jumping between central office and principals back and forth simply because the pay's another $3,000 or $4,000, you know.
Well, in the scenario, the plan in my head is to say, so you knock the bill of those principals and a position opens up at central office and year one, you take it.
Right.
Then year two, another one opens up and he takes it, but he could jump ahead of you salary-wise because he got one more year.
Exactly. You got it. You got it. It's not fair to them.
Yeah.
Angie's going to give you some scenarios in a minute, I think.
Yeah, and she's got some good solutions.
You might consider.
It's a problem. And just so y'all will know, the same thing was happening a couple of years ago with principals and assistant principals. And that's why they struck that language of on or after July 1st, 2009, because you were going to have principals supervising teachers making.
Making more.
Yeah. I still don't think it's a real good thing that your principal's making the same monthly pay teacher. But again, that's just, you don't, you would not see that in private sector.
Well, no, you don't see that in private sector.
That's, that's my point. You don't, you don't make the same monthly pay as folks supervising.
As the supervisor, you should always make more.
Is DPI trying to address this?
The House and DPI has been working diligently and the House and Senate are trying to fix it. I don't know, the Senate has got a real interesting principal scale. They're doing it based on ADM, plus they've got all these bonuses stacked out there on MEET, growth, exceed, growth, blah, 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 blah. I mean, it's, that's going to be an interesting thing to.
We won't know till they vote because all we've seen is the Senate group.
Well, the problem lies in that.
They're trying to fix it.
I don't know how, I don't know that this group could help fix that.
Yeah. And the assistant principal, again, this is, the senate bill has the assistant principals. You remember, we talked about how everything bounces against that A certificate schedule? Assistant principals would go back to being paid 13% above the A schedule. So you can see, like, if a master's is 10%, then they're about 3% more.
The other issue you're going to have is, once the legislature does act this summer, you know, they're talking about somewhere between 7 and 10%. This problem's only going to get worse.
Yeah, it's going to be.
The discrepancy's going to get bigger each time if we don't change the language a little bit about how central office people are paid. And I think Angie's going to talk about that.
And just a couple of, you know, we try not to bring your problem without having a solution to suggest. Of course, the long-term solution would be to fix all of our minimum, maximum pay tables and restructure them. Or a short-term solution would be to authorize the superintendent to kind of apply the same general language to central office administrators as we now have for principals, assistant principals, that they cannot make less per month than what they would make in the classroom. These folks back here, excuse me, these six, if we applied that language right now, it would cost us, to bring those folks up to that monthly teacher pay, it would cost us $10,700 in salary and matching FICA in retirement. That would be the cost to bring those six up to the teacher pay scale.
Is that all we're asking for, would be six?
Well.
And then change.
That's where we are now.
Change the language and the codes and everything else. But money-wise, you're saying $10,000.
For these folks, yeah. For their, to bring their, I think the salary part's about 8,600 and then matching FICA in retirement right now would be, would bring it up to 10, 7.
Is that just an issue?
That's just based on what we're looking at right now, these numbers.
It would be a recurring cost.
It would be a recurring cost, like 131,000.
And that is, and that is a short-term fix.
Yeah.
And I'm probably talking out of turn, but I'm sitting here, Dr. Garrett, you know, lets me sit in with her when we interview. She's always done that, and especially the curriculum folks. And I'm looking at people in-house. And so even if you do that, basically what you're going to say to a principal is, welcome to the central office. We're going to pay you what we're paying you right now unless you've got a lot of experience and not a lot of those have secondary experience. If you're talking to an assistant principal, you're saying, we're going to pay you what we pay you right now, you do get to work one more month. So it's sort of scary.
Yeah.
I mean, we want, we want a Knox Hardin-type person who's got 10 more years left, but.
And how do we fix that problem with a long-term fixing the?
Fix the, fix the steps inside. That'll take you some time and some work.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
The short-term thing she's talking about, well, we'll get it back to even for the time being. And it won't let it go backwards as quick because it's tied to the teacher, what you would make monthly as a teacher. And that's kind of what they're tying the principals right now.
The only money we can flex is the local. I mean, just changing that language is not going to make the state pay us anymore, is it?
Well, the state.
No, the state gives us a lump.
They give us a lump sum and as long as we're in that minimum, maximum range, you can pay people whatever. And, you know, honestly, in the spirit of full disclosure, I don't know how much y'all are following the House and Senate budgets, but they are, both budgets call for cuts to central office administration allotment for next year. And like I said, I know this is an uncomfortable conversation, but this is important. I mean, it's very, this is our school system. I mean, this would never fly in the private sector. I just.
Well, I know you can't throw money at problems and I don't know what they're trying to do, but you still have got to have the people that are in line that takes care of all the other steps has got to be paid to make it worth their while to be in those positions. Or we're going back to the joke I made, doing the cheapest cut, you're going to get the cheapest people and then it's going to hurt you in a long.
And you think we've got in the top 10% because we had good people in it?
Right, right.
And we maintain that. Not looking at what we have right now because we're limited to who we can hire. Because the first thing I did was have Angie do a printout, who could and who could not come to the county office. And I was amazed by it.
Well, long-term, you know, this person.
Yeah, we're getting older.
And that'd be like, to me, and I think this is a proven fact, but since I can't side, Dr. You know, the military's pay scales and hierarchy is probably one of the great systems in the world. But you don't promote captain to a major and say, congratulations on the promotion, you make the same amount of money.
Or less.
Or less.
Or less.
I mean, that would, you'd never have somebody that you outranks make more money. It's just impossible.
That's a good analogy.
Now, here comes another question. What does the other LEAs right now, I mean, are they having a problem or did we cause this our problem ourselves? Or does the other LEAs, or they've got principals?
I can't really speak to that for administrators. I can say for non-certified, and again, the salary schedule's the same, minimum, maximum. State don't care what you pay them, just between here. I can say for non-certified, there appears to be a problem across the state because SEC, School Efficiency Consultants are going to, for free, do a salary study across the state. They're asking counties to participate. And last week at my regional finance officers meeting, because I wanted to participate in that, that I asked, I said, how many of y'all are participating? And they were like, what's the point? We're, you know. And so people were discouraged. I mean, and I would imagine the administrators are in that. I don't know for sure, but.
Last year, PANK, the Personnel Association in North Carolina did a study with 115 LEAs. And they did, what, four positions, asking for the title, how much they made, what the local supplement was, so on and so forth. And they were all central office positions. It was finance officer, HR, until, I can't remember the other two, I just kind of paid attention to ours. But out of 115, we're 113th. So the only other person that was paid less than me, and I'm not backing for a pay raise, I'm just saying that's what the thing says.
Say that again. How, were you ranked 113 out of 15?
They did a survey of all the central, of all the LEAs in North Carolina, and you had two, the major two were me and Angie. And out of 115, we were 113th as far as pay.
As far as pay?
Pay. For those two positions.
Those two positions.
Just those two positions.
Not the entire central office.
Not the entire central office, but those two positions. So to me, that will sort of extrapolate to the others, though, if the pay philosophy's the same, you know, for those two positions as the others. But the, the serious problem here, though, about recruiting, though, is, is you look at a principal and you say to them, if you come to central office, the only pay raise you'll ever get is if the state gives all state employees a pay raise. And basically what you're telling them is, is their four best years, which their retirement is based on, is now behind them.
And if they stay as a principal, they're going to get that principal.
They'll get the principal bumps and it'll continue going up, yes. Or even as a teacher. There are some, a couple of central office administrators that go back to teaching and have national boards and do a couple coaching jobs and will make more than they make at central office. And so what you're saying to them is, is your four best years for retirement are behind you. You will never be able to increase your retirement as long as you stay at central office. And it, you know, it may have to come from some local money to fix it, you know, because they, they give us a certain amount from the state.
It's a lot, it's got to.
Yeah.
The only flexibility's in the state.
Right.
They stay our size.
And if you up a step to, to make it right, then you'll probably have to take it from local money. But that's, that's the position we're in, you know. I was talking to a principal last week that was asking me about that secondary supervisor gig. And I said, well, if you're going to come for a year or two, you might, you know, you'll be okay. But if you're going to stay more than three or four, you're going backwards as far as retirement. And they were like, well, why would anybody do that? And I said, I don't know.
Well, can I ask you, if we had a principal that was coming to be a administrator and say they were going from, I don't know, returning all of the principal four to admin four, would we give them the same, would we meet when they were step 18s? Would they stay step 18s?
Not necessarily.
There might be a 16.
So that's where you make your correction.
That's where you can make the correction. But the problem too, Dr. Rogers, is once you come in at step 18, you stay step 18 for the, for the rest of your career. Unless the state gives a 1% or 2% pay raise to all state employees.
Like if they came in two years ago as a step 16?
Yeah.
Or let's say right now, they're a step 18. And next year, they're going to be a step 19. Well, all that's going to happen on this pay scale is that 4,862 is going to have one and a half percent times and slide down. Does that make sense?
So if I hired in at the step 16, I'm going to be a step 16 now in retirement?
Well, you, now, you're going to, you'll, you'll keep sliding. I mean, the numbers will go down, the steps will go down, but the dollars don't change. The dollars are only a one and a half percent or, in other words, these steps don't freeze. Does that, does that make sense? The pay tables don't freeze because they're giving across the board raises to everybody.
But you depend on that across the board raise.
Yeah. And it would be okay if it was 1985 and everybody in the state, everybody, let's say, you came in in 1985 and everybody in the state from the state legislature got a 2% pay raise from classified to the superintendent. Then it's all okay. But what has happened for the last decade is teachers have gotten this and all the other classified folks and the central office have gotten $750.
One time.
One time. And so that's why the teacher scale has moved past principals, assistant principals in the central office.
That was not done, that was done deliberately.
It was done deliberately over a long period of time.
Yes.
Then on top of that, why, what's the incentive for me to be in crime by a provision?
There's really not, because you're not penalized for it.
I can't, I can't get in there. So why bother?
Well, they're talking about fixing that this summer for principals with the bonuses for growth. So that, they could get some significant bonuses if that goes through, like it's proposed. But for central office, no. And again, we don't begrudge that for teachers, that's fantastic, I mean, we love it, but.
They need it.
But you've got a problem of recruiting leadership now as a result, that that's outrun what central office can do.
Just get your national board.
Stay there where you're at.
Well, we've got one principal I was talking to not long ago, if they went back in the classroom with their national boards, coached one sport and did driver's ed, they would make about $14,000 more with none of the responsibility that they've got. Now, you can't, you know, you can't compare that, because they're doing driver's ed and things like that, but the way Angie's got it worded here with that base pay, monthly pay, that's comparing apples to apples, because, for example, if I'm a principal at Tuscaloosa High School, as a central office administrator, I don't deserve the supplement they get. They go out every night, ballgames and things, and I'm going home at five, sometimes six, but I'm not at a ballgame till 11 o'clock. So we're not talking about comparing that, we're talking about just that base monthly pay is out of whack.
Base pay.
Yeah.
But still, but don't get trouble me to go, but I understand, see, if, if I'm a fourth grade teacher, why, there's no incentive.
Not if you're fourth. If you, if you're a fourth grade teacher, if you're a fourth grade teacher with national board certification, and your kids do well, there's no incentive really to change jobs, in my mind. And maybe if you're a fourth grade teacher with national board certification, your kids do well, we don't want you to change, but we want someone, you know, who's qualified to be the secondary supervisor, or the elementary supervisor, or the Title I director, or whatever opens.
Yeah, they don't want to change, but you'd rather, you'd like somebody with the same talent.
We need someone, and while I'm thinking out loud, you know, there, I, I've told people who've asked about jobs, and, and there are some people that if, if you're deciding whether, no offense, but if you're deciding, and this is me, sometimes I speak too much, if you're, you're deciding whether that person's going to run one of your big comprehensive high schools, or they're going to be your secondary supervisor, you really want them running one of your big comprehensive high schools.
Yeah.
It's better for the kids than everybody else. But there should be enough of a pool out there, and if you're deciding, no offense to elementary principals, I was one for seven years, but if you're deciding if they're going to run a small elementary school or be the elementary supervisor, we might want to be able to pay them enough to come and be the elementary supervisor, because they can help eight schools get better.
And I think this, what Angie's recommending tonight would certainly take care of the problem that we have right now, if we could do that. And even, you know, when I'm, when we're hiring for the secondary supervisor, I mean, everyone that has asked me about it has, has not showed any interest after they find out what the pay would be as far as what they're making now. And we just. Position, because, you know, when we did advanced ed, that was one of the criteria that we had for the needs improvement, was so that we could do, you know, study guides and to make that more in alliance with what we're doing in, in the middle school.
Can you add that to the personnel, and we'll vote on it too? Or do you want to run it back through finance?
Mr. Hanson, you want to run that through finance and then bring it, or do you want it, maybe just put it down for?
I'd like to see it through finance, I know Mr. Hanson's the chairman, but I'd like to see that pot, $10,000, go through finance and then bring it back.
Angie, will you go ahead and put that on your agenda?
Uh huh, sure will.
And then the solution here, long-term, short-term, it sounds like you're going to need a long-term, you need to start working on a long-term, period. Short-term, if you get the secondary supervisor, that's going to be your choice, what scale you're going to start them on.
Well, but I can't really bring them in higher than what your level fours are right now, though, because you have, everybody in the county office is a level four.
Well, and you can't bring one person in, that's true.
Well, I, I really feel like that short-term solution is the best, that they are not going to be paid less per month than what they would make as a classroom teacher. One of the things, too, there, there's no guessing game, we run their social security numbers through that calculator, it, it tells you. The other thing, I don't benefit from that short-term solution, because I don't have a teaching, so I don't want anybody to walk away and not say, Angie gave a 30-minute presentation, ask for a raise for us, you know, because it's not about me, I promise you, it's about these other folks that I'm afraid we're going to lose. We've got an opening now, but, you know, why, why would you stay? Why would you keep staying if that, as that gap continues to grow? And like I said earlier, our pool of candidates just gets younger and younger, and that's, I mean, good for them.
It's actually hurting them when it comes to the pay, being younger and younger.
So.
Well, then we're getting more and more teachers who are national certified, which is great for Haywood County, but when it comes to this, it's not the best thing.
You'll have another 55 come, come December, that'll be national board certified, so that's great for them.
Absolutely.
And Dr. Garrett has asked Angie and, and me to form a committee to study these pay scales, you know, for a long-term solution.
Are we also?
Principals.
For principals.
For principals.
Not for central office.
Not central office.
For principals.
Not central office, not non-certified.
I would encourage you, whenever you feel comfortable doing it, because there's a lot going on, just to look at a long-term solution. It may be a long time before you could ever do anything about it, but I would at least encourage you to look at it when it's a reasonable time to do that.
Now, if the state is talking about cutting central, central office funds, does that mean more of the central office funding is going to fall back on local funds?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's something that we got to consider, that we're going to be picking up more of the central office on locals.
That's right.
That's all I'm making.
Yeah.
But. This whole, if you look across, if you look in the big, big scheme of things, if the state continues to do that, then they're undermining the public school system, and there's no wonder they're supporting charter schools.
But that's.
Plain and, I mean, it's that simple.
That, that, you hit, you hit the nail on the head. They've been doing that for years, is as long as they keep on doing what they're doing, yeah, people's going to go to charter schools. Heck, you don't, I mean, you, you, you hit it, it's a hurting the public school, period. And I've always says, it says free public school, but it's still.
And the charter school has no accountability to anybody.
Yeah, but we just can't keep on crying over spilt mail.
I want to say, I want to say what Angie said, too, this, none of those numbers up there are numbers for Dr. Garrett or myself either, just like they're not for Angie. We're asking you to look at this, and it doesn't benefit us.
We just want the best people in those jobs.
How many people are we talking about?
It's right there.
It's right there.
It was, what, 10 total, and?
Six, and then whoever the new hire is.
Yeah, there, there's six that are underwater right now, but.
People that that scale would affect.
Right there.
Six, six people.
Well, no, six short-term.
Six that, that scale would change, so 10 people are in that.
10, 10 long-term. Because those others are going to go underwater pretty soon, you got a couple of them sitting there at $132, if, if teachers get a good pay raise, they're underwater, they're underwater.
That's why you're.
It'll only get worse in August.
You're going to have to change pay scale, that's just, that's going to be the solution, is changing the pay scale, who you bring in and long-term, I mean, that.
And we, we need to restructure all those minimum maximum scales, but.
But you've always got to remember, it takes money to do something.
It does.
Yes, it does.
So if you don't have the money, then what you going to do? You can't just keep on kicking that can down the road and taking out fund balance to pay for everything. If you don't have money.
Your only option would be cuts.
And we've already discussed that.
We're understaffed right now.
Right.
I remember that central office up there.
Yeah, true.
Well, I remember back in the day, when you'd go up to central office, there was somebody in about every one of those offices. Now, I know you're wearing three or four hats, you're wearing three or four hats, everybody in here is wearing three or four hats. And, and that's okay, we chose. Yeah, but I know, but still, the reality is, we've still got as much to look after as we did a few years ago. We do. And we have fewer people to do that job. And Mr. Francis, when the big cuts started in January of '09, I mean, I can remember being in lots of conversations with Dr. Garrett and Larry Smith and some of those people, and we chose at her wise recommendation to make those first cuts at the central office, you know? And, you know, can we cut more? Maybe, but at some point in time, it becomes inefficient.
Yep.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank y'all for listening.
Okay, I do want to say something, since you mentioned it.
Yes.
Right now, we, okay, we got two and a half million in fund balance, we know we got to bring it down to 1.5 for the county commissioners, so we keep circulating with the fund balance, so there's some money there. We do need to pay the supplements, we do need to get these people here even, and we do need these teachers, these help in these schools. But something to think about, if we have to start cutting, and I brought it up before, we have $750,000 in supplies and materials. I mean, you cut it 15% across the board, and everybody just buys a few less things, then we can pay for these 131,000. So there's other ways we can look at this, so I, I don't think it's unreasonable. If we have a million, right now, we got a million dollars we've got to get down and keep it down for the county commissioners, so we got to spend some money, and then we're just going to have to balance what we got, so we may have to take away from somewhere else. I, I think if you look at the big picture, I think we've got it, it's just, we're going to have to do something.
I think you.
Every year, every six months, we're going to have to say, okay, do we buy this, or do we not? Or do we get a better deal, you know, Joe may find us a better deal on something, I know it's different budgets, but I'm going to.
And I agree with that, and I agree with whatever we're having to do, and the 2.5, that surprised me, I thought we had a little bit less, but it all goes back to going to on through the future. We can take $300,000 out every year, but if you're not replacing it or getting to that flat rate, then your fund balance is going to be completely gone. Or you're going to have to start doing cuts. So you still have got to watch about.
Recurring.
Right.
Every year.
Right, reoccurring expenses, and I think that's where Ronnie is hitting it more than anything, is you may have to start looking at supplies and materials, start saying, okay, let's cut it back, yes, let's cut it 15%. I think that's a very.
That's maybe what we want to do. I, I think you're on something, because as you add personnel, then you've got to ask them, you know, look at your budget, and see where, because if you add a reoccurring expense, then you got to find the reoccurring savings.
Right.
So if you can task the principals to look at their supplies and materials, the way they go about purchasing things, is, is there some way to consolidate their purchasing and, and get the cost down? I, I think, I think it's a reasonable thing to go back to say to them, listen, if we approve this, then here's what we're going to expect on the other side. And just see, they may come up with a whole lot more than what we'll find.
And if they all work together, you got two coming in here together, ask them, well, you got 15 principals, administration, smart people, they know what their budgets are, you know, we can tighten up in certain areas, I don't know what all their areas are, it's hard to look at all those budgets.
They, they know, it's hard for us to look at all those numbers.
I looked at them, talked about, went crazy, and I give up.
Well, and I know there are some, there are some, and I think I mentioned this maybe four, five, six months ago, is you've got departments, when I say departments, you've got the maintenance department, bus garage, food, child nutrition, are there a way that we can, can combine something to save money? I know Joe's been helping child nutrition, which has been great, but are there a way that something can be put together and save money somewhere?
We're going to announce, Angie's asked for a list of items that they're using purchasing orders from, at the end of the year, we'll compile those to see if there's anything in common that we could possibly look at and see if we could do the warehouse buying, in other words, how like to do school foods, but we're looking at that now, but we just don't have the information.
Isn't there prison industries?
There is, and we've used.
Yeah, I mean, that just, in what you're saying, mass purchases, one or two items to save money.
And even when it comes to management, you know, everything fits into a nice neat little silo. The trick is finding which silos you can combine.
Right.
Good deal.
All right, thank you, Angie, and Mr. Heinz, I know you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'll just be on a thankful night, and I thank you all. Thank you all for coming.
Still coming in late.
Joe, hurry up. wasting my bad time.
I got to go to work.
Well, Mr. Joe, you're next on the agenda.
I'll try to be as quick as you let me.
As you let me.
All right, thank you, you have a good night.
He put it back on you.
I have in your packet, you've got a June 2017 building and grounds agenda, this is just highlights that I'm going to be going over. One of the things that the life building and grounds, they asked me to put together a draft of the office space for central office, and how it might work at Central Elementary, so I do have a couple, I've got three different schemes. One you have in your packet, the other two are behind Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte for the board to look at, and we'll be discussing those at our building and grounds meeting next week. Any questions on that?
I'm sure you'll go into a lot more detail on Monday night.
Only if you need me to.
Okay.
The next thing, I met with Rachel Brown from Doke Energy, they are asking for an easement for underground power line to go up the field at Honeysuckle Road, behind Central Haywood, over here at Ball Field. They're having issues with the power line, and I met with them, and I've got a copy of that easement somewhere, I'm going to have her email me that and give it to the board, so we'll have Pat look at that on Monday night, if Building and Grounds is okay with that. Next thing, there was, and I don't know how many of you were aware of it, Mike Clampett had sponsored a bill in the House for Haywood County Schools to possibly receive a portion of land in front of Junealuska. I have not heard anything more than it got sponsored and co-sponsored, but that is something that we might want to discuss if we're interested, if it does pass.
Do you remember when Joe Samquinn, when he came to us at my, one of those, he was unpacking his house, and what we had intended to do a few, so we could do over there, I need to speak to Mr. Clampett at the, at the early college graduation, Mr. Walker.
Did.
And that's the state on right now, I surprise.
State, and to the right.
As you go in, it's to the right.
Yeah.
It's the old, yeah, old package, surely everybody here knows it, except God might not, but everybody else remembers old package.
That's where I learned to drive.
Where's he from here?
He sent me down there, would, give him a job Sunday, and I'd drive.
Sorry.
Young lady.
Hey? No, he's got one, come on, Joe. Go ahead.
It's a walking bridge. You stick gravel, go to the walking bridge.
In your packet, too, you have a preliminary layout of markless findings for those plans, kind of a brief overview of what we're looking at, what costs may be incurred with that, so you can look over that and review. So you can look over that and review it. You also in your packet should have a copy that, the header of it's LED waves. We spoke briefly in building and grounds about some sort of energy upgrades. I've had a number of companies come to me, want me to go into performance contracting, which essentially they will come in, assess our facilities, give us a presentation of, we upgrade all the LED lights, the heating and air conditioning controls in exchange for every year, if we save $250,000 on our electricity, that money goes to them rather than us keeping it. They get whatever savings they save for 15 to 20 years, whatever the contract term is with that. The big benefit is in a year, we get all new lights, heating, controls, whatever they see is going to benefit us the most and our budget doesn't go up. So what money would they save us, they get. Does that make sense?
But now who would be paying?
They come in and, and replace everything?
Yes.
No cost to
Pretty much.
But they get the money on the way.
That we save. They save us. How's that?
They save, they save us, we get new stuff, but they get the money.
These are contractors, Johnson Controls, Snyder Electric. Their purpose is energy management. So they will come in, tie us to a 15-year, 20-year contract at max, whatever it benefits for them to put forth of $30 million to fund an upgrade to our school system. They won't do just one school, they do the whole district. So they would come in and ever, ever facility in our county, school related, they would upgrade lights to LED. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, but they're not going to spend $30 million over 15 or one year or two years to get $250,000 to
Well
Two point
The 250's a number.
$2.5 million back, yeah.
The 250's a number. I'm just, I'm throwing the number out there.
They, they would, it's something they'd, they're making money somehow.
They're making money. That is their job is to make money.
Make money, right.
But it's been, if it benefit us, could we all divide it with no cost?
Yeah, but then when will that? I think that's something we need to talk about more because you don't get new light now, but 10 years from now, when you're still paying them that $250,000, the lights are obsolete again.
How long is that contract for?
Each contract varies. So it could be a 10-year, a 12-year, a 15-year, 20-year. It depends on the assessment and the payback. So the contract's going to be as long as it takes for them to get their money back.
But they need the assessment, I think, is free.
Yes.
Come in and do the assessment.
Yes.
You'll come back to us.
Well, that's one thing I would like to know, if that's the direction you would like to go in.
Well, no, that's what I was going to say. It doesn't sound like we've got anybody to lose to get the assessment down and then see where we're at.
Oh, yeah, you can get the assessment all you want to.
Sessman does the assessment, it's going to be in their favor, right?
If you have heads over personnel that did the same thing, what would be the requirement on the assessment?
If you look at your LED wave sheet that's in your packet, that is, that is 96 lights that if we replaced ourself in-house, how long it would take for us to get our money back. And I base that on, well, I use Tuscaloosa Pisgah. These schools are 50, 60-year-old, their lights are 50, 60-year-old. Most of them are at the point of replacement. So if we took those old lights out and replaced them with fluorescent and then if we took them out and replaced them with LED, the comparison from fluorescent to LED, our payback time is one month and 15 days. If we change from what's there, Angie out, what's wore out, the difference between fluorescent and LED, and that's doing it in-house.
So we'd start paying for more replacements after a month. I mean
Well
Savings would start paying for more.
Well, our building over where I work is four years old and they did the same analysis for us and it was a three-month payback. I mean, even the technology is four years ago.
Yeah.
Brand-new stuff. LEDs are that cost-effective.
On this sheet, and you can look at this more and we'll talk about it more in building and grounds, but the cost to operate our old fixture over 16 years and nine days versus an LED fixture, there's $98,000 difference. So a fluorescent fixture is $124,968. But now that's lights, kilowatts, maintenance. So everything is included in that number, not just turning it on and turning it off. That's maintenance and everything. And the cost to operate an LED light is $27,840 for 16 years, nine days. So those are some numbers to look at and then we'll discuss it a little more in depth at building and grounds.
I think we need to start right here.
These don't do that no more.
I don't hear nothing.
These are LEDs.
That's good.
All right. So please look over the schematics for our blueprints. And any questions, feedback, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Speaking of building the grounds, can we start at four, please?
I'd love to. 3:30?
Who's over building grounds? Oh, Mr. Rogers. Can we start at four Monday? It looks like a whole Toledo.
He missed last month.
I missed last month.
You don't punish the whole committee.
He's using his 20 questions last month and this one.
Oh, I'll be here for it. Man, Joe, start doing it. No, seriously, could we start at four? I'm sort of Let's try four. Come on, come on, come on. I'll pay you. I won't ask too many questions, I promised, start at four. I've got to go somewhere. That's the reason why I'm asking. But I don't want to miss building. I don't want, I don't want to miss building the grounds again. But still, we all like questions.
You're going to have to make this up, buddy.
Yeah, I'd charge him. Get him done.
All right, you, Scott. Is that what you'd be up coming for?
Oh, yeah, I keep on forgetting we have Scott over here.
He's surrounding you over there.
Poor Scott. You want me to switch places with him so you'll remember he's here?
Yeah, that's what you want to do.
Let the media know because You let the media know because there's a lot of folks who want to be in on the discussion on central. I'd suggest you hold that topic until five, just in case.
Building the grounds don't be at five anyway. Now, it's 4:30.
It's definitely at four. It was at five.
Five.
What, yeah, it was
It was at five. You want it 4:30?
No, I want it at four, is what I want.
Yeah, we left them one for her.
I know, but that's why I asked.
We're giving them to you this time. Hit the hand where
Hit the cameras off and he, okay. Anything else?